Let's call the meeting to order. Everyone please rise for pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I've one changed the agenda and that's to remove item E under consent.
Also, Mr. Mayor should note that staff have provided for council revise resolution 2331. That has some additional language based on feedback from the city attorney after reviewing the campaign.
Okay.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second, by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda passes. Is Bryce still here? Oh, there you are. Bryce, good to recognize you today. Bryce Shenkey, right?
Shenkey.
I've never pronounced your name correctly, I apologize. Bryce was elected to the Elko New Market City Council in November of 2020. Prior to the city council, Bryce served on the planning commission or as a planning commissioner from March to December of 2020. Bryce brought to the council expertise, knowledge of the real estate industry, law enforcement, and municipal government. While serving on the city council, Councilmember Shenkey, I still said it wrong, didn't I?
Close enough.
All right. Has served as the city's representative to IA-35 Solutions Alliance, the Minnesota Valley Transit Authority Board. And during his tenure with the city council, Bryce was involved in numerous projects such as the QuickTrip, yeah, such as the new QuickTrip, the IA-35 interchange area utilities extension project, and the 2040 comp plan. The city of Elko New Market recognizes Bryce for his dedicated and valuable service to the citizens of the city.
I just wanted to say that.
It's a, it was an absolute pleasure to serve with everyone here and just the partnership that we had. I definitely had a very enjoyable experience. It was a great experience. Wish it could have lasted a little longer, but life goes in many different directions. So I definitely appreciate all of you and I know the city's in great hands. So, thanks.
Moving on to public comment. Anyone here to speak under public comment? All right. Consent agenda. I have one quick question on something on the consent agenda. Before I go, does anybody else have anything? Question I had was in relation to the minutes and the action we took on the water supply plan. Did we, I thought we continued it. I didn't think we tabled it.
So the water supply plan you did not table? You've directed that to be on the next meeting. What has, was tabled was the, is currently tabled, are the applications related to NIAE?
Right, but the minutes reflected that we tabled.
No, that, I don't think that, if you don't think that was correct, it's your minutes, you can.
I don't think that was correct, but does anybody else, just because there's a different process to go through to untable something.
I'll be honest, I didn't read the minutes, so I'm trying to pull it up right now. I had to prioritize.
Going down to find it. Does anybody else remember if we tabled or continued?
I'd have to re-watch it. It's all a blur, man.
Practically speaking, does it matter? I mean, I know if we have, we have to untable something at one point. Does it matter what's in the minutes?
So at the end of the day, it's your minutes, so it'll say whatever you, what you intended.
All right, can we amend the minutes to say it was continued rather than tabled? And other than that, any motions?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second, by Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent passes. We have no public hearings. General business. So we have quite a bit. Development concept plan for the preserve.
Okay, I'm going to give a overview, very similar to an overview I gave at a recent planning commission meeting. Try to go through it a little bit quicker tonight. We're, just want to make sure the council is on, is kind of the same page as the planning commission before developer RNF Properties represented by Tom Ryan proceeds with further work on this potential development. And the preserve is a proposed, as the concept plan, it has been submitted, a 13 lot, single-family residential development located along the east side of County Road 91, kind of across from Aaron Drive. And then also, there are a couple lots at the north end of Whispering, the Whispering Hills development. Again, seeking preliminary feedback at this point. Just neighboring conditions, so the north of the proposed development is land guided, I'm sorry, I'm just starting over. To the south of the proposed development is a single-family residential development, both in attached and detached units, townhouse units, and single-family. To the east is a DNR protected water, wetlands, and then beyond that is the Elko Speedway and drive-in movie theater. To the north is vacant property guided to high-density residential, and to the west is single-family development, detached, single-family homes. This is kind of an aerial overlay of the property owned by RNF Properties or the, under the Elko Speedway. And it's this, this west side here, parcel A, which is proposed to be split off from the rest of the property and developed. One thing that I wanted to point out, and we did raise this with the planning commission as well. There was a 2005 noise impact study conducted that measured noise impacts during a couple of different race events. So we could just understand what noise was a result of the Speedway and how that might impact future land uses at the site. It's also very important to note that the Speedway has existed since 1965 and is exempt from any state noise standards. But it is important to understand how this may impact future development around the property. So at the site, at the proposed development site, there was actually a metering station. Showed decibel levels kind of ranging between 63 and 70. And the state noise standard that was used in that analysis was 65. There were some, there was discussion on this item at the planning commission, and there were some kind of concepts, you know, thrown out for discussion. One, just do nothing, noting the existence of the Elko Speedway is commonly known, and they are exempt from state noise standards. A second option would be to include something on the title of any proposed lots that just gives notice of the Speedway and that they're exempt. And then the, kind of the third most extreme option was to recommend that new homes be constructed with soundproofing mitigation through adoption of a special ordinance or new zoning district that would require that. Planning commission didn't see this as a significant issue and didn't reckon, recommend option number three. I think the, the do nothing, or I don't think they were opposed to, you know, placing something on the title, but just wanted to note that. Comprehensive plan does guide this area to medium-density residential, and that does allow for single-family detached dwellings. Ideally, we would have denser development here, but because of the large number of wetlands and the configuration of the wetlands, to achieve the density that we're, you know, really looking for is almost impossible because of setbacks and just the odd shape of the property that's developable. So with this proposed development, we'd be achieving about three net units per acre, or units per net acre. The property is currently zoned PUD, and it's part of the PUD that has been approved for the Speedway. We would need to rezone a portion of the property to be consistent with our comprehensive plan to that medium and the northern portion to the high-density residential. And we'd also need to amend the PUD for the Speedway. This area is currently designated as some overflow parking in their PUD. And I don't believe it's, it's maybe been used once, but it's never been used since I've been with the city. And even on their most successful events in recent past, this area's never been used. So we'll need to look at that and create some kind of justification for the revised parking with that PUD. But that is something to note us as well. The lots in the proposed development average about 64 feet in width, so they do meet the minimum size criteria for a single-family lot in that zoning district, in the R3 zoning district. There would be a little bit of screening required along County Road 91 for one, that would apply to one of the lots. Some trees, double row of trees would meet that with a berming. The developer would need to conduct a tree inventory, and 40% of the significant trees would need to be retained. There are very few trees on the site. There are some at the north end of Evergreen Court and a little at Pond Court. I suspect that the majority of those are not identified as significant trees in viewing the site. However, it is required under a code that an inventory be conducted by a qualified professional. There are a number of easements on the site today. It is plat, it is currently part of a plat of Elko Marketplace. And those easements would need to be vacated. Staff suggestion would be that we hold the hearing to, to just vacate all of those, and we'd reestablish the new easements with the new plat. And that they wouldn't be vacated officially unless the new plat was filed. There is sanitary sewer infrastructure adjacent to the site along Highway 91, and then also at the north end of the two cul-de-sacs. Developers just proposing to connect to our existing infrastructure. Water, the same, there is not water along 91, but there's water available at Aaron Drive that they would propose to connect to. One thing to point out for the council here is that our comprehensive plan does identify a future water trunk line along the east side of Highway 91. And normally, we would implement those with development and have the developer install those, and the city would pay oversizing. In this particular case, based on the limited number of lots that can be achieved in this development, we've had a significant amount of discussion internally with engineering, public works, and administration. And we don't think that's appropriate. It's, it's burdensome, and it would basically kill the development. So in lieu of that, we would ask the developer to provide additional easements that would allow us to install that in the future. At a future date. And Rich can speak more to that if you have additional questions on that. So the water and sewer layout proposed is, is pretty simple, just providing in the cul-de-sac. Rich has provided some additional alternatives so that that trunk line we were talking about can actually be incorporated into the development to save money all the way around. Stormwater details are still being finalized, but generally speaking, a couple of stormwater ponds would then overflow into a wetland, which would then overflow into the DNR protected water. A wetland delineation has been conducted, so we know the, the boundaries that we're looking at and the buffer requirements. And staff has no concerns at this point with the way the development has been laid out. Again, the large, kind of the open water area is protected by the DNR. We did send notice of the preliminary, our concept plan to the DNR and haven't received any feedback. If they do proceed with formal application for development, we will notice them again. There are no flood planes on the property. Access, transportation issues. The property, of course, is adjacent to Highway 91, which is an arterial roadway, rural section. And then Evergreen Court and Pond Court are city local roads. They would have a couple driveways off. Evergreen Court would have, is proposed to have two driveways that would connect to the end of the cul-de-sac, and Pond Court one. Connection to Highway 91 would require approval from Scott County. They have reviewed the concept plan and have provided written feedback on that. Proposed in the development is a single cul-de-sac, 700 feet in length, proposed at 24 feet in width within a 50-foot right-of-way. This proposed street design does not meet city standards. It exceeds the maximum cul-de-sac length. Our typical roadway is 28 feet in width rather than 24, and we typically require a 60-foot right-of-way. This is proposed at 50. I think at this, based on our internal conversations and, and planning commission, there is support for these variances. And there are a couple of reasons, because they will provide less, they would have less impact on the wetlands. And the development will only be single side, houses will only be on one side of the road instead of two. And ideally, the road would loop back to County Road 91, but the county won't allow that. So this is just the most efficient use of the land. So we're, we'll be looking for feedback from the council regarding the variances.
Counsel, any initial thoughts, comments, questions, concerns?
So there won't be a turn off of, or an access off of 91, or there will be?
Could be, yeah, just the one.
Just one.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we'll have to line up directly with Aaron Drive, so. To this point, we haven't sought feedback from the Parks Commission. So we will be asking them for feedback regarding potential future parks, or future trails in the property, and how they want to handle any park dedication.
How does Cory feel about the winter plowing the cul-de-sac? Is that going to be big enough to get the plow through there at a 24-foot road?
Yeah.
The cul-de-sac would have to be big enough for, for moving around, but 24-foot. The other thing you have is there's no hole on the other side, so you can name.
Okay.
What he does to my driveway every single time he comes around the corner.
So we've gotten preliminary feedback from most of the agencies. Staff has kind of made 25 notes or comments for the developer to consider as he moves forward. The planning commission, again, did consider the application or request for feedback at April 25th meeting, and they have expressed support for the project. So I think at this point, we're asking if the council supports the concept plan as depicted, and if you support the variances from the roadway standards.
I was curious on the building official, his comments about looking for soil testing. Is that typical? It seems new.
Usually, we don't do it in advance of the development, but as part of the development, you know, they have to prepare each building pad, and there is testing that has to be submitted to the city on each pad. But he just, it is unusual here, but I think Tom said he's already done some soil, soil borings.
Yeah, okay. Just seemed unusual, that's all.
It is.
No, I mean, I got no issues with the, the road variances. If, you know, Chief Fire Department and Cory think all that's fine, and, you know, Rich from an engineering standpoint, I mean, it doesn't bother me at all. And I think the trunk line easement thing makes sense too, because that would, I mean, just, yeah. Seems too much of a burden that wouldn't be necessary, so.
I think city staff and the planning commission and Mr. Ryan did a good job coming up with this concept plan, so. All good. Next item.
Do you want that in a formal motion or just commonest?
Since it's a concept plan review, it's just, it's feedback in direction, so.
Okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda 8B is development concept plan review. And this is a concept that also RNF Properties, Mr. Ryan, has regarding potential high-density or mixed-use development on a property that he owns in Elko Marketplace, first edition. So the area is currently designated as a commercial development area. RNF Properties interested in, again, mixed-use and high-density. The planning commission originally heard preliminary concept without any site plans, just having a discussion on, on January 31st. And then there was preliminary support. So Mr. Ryan had his consultant draw this concept plan, which shows a co, two single-use buildings, and then a apartment building and a mixed-use building. So what we're seeing here is a three-story apartment building with 50, on, on that lot, 56 parking spaces. A separate building, that's a mixed-use, three-story apartment building, that's the L-shaped building with 81 parking spaces on that lot. And then a proposed commercial site containing 2,400 square foot building and seven parking spaces. And a 2,700 square foot building with seven parking spaces. These are the two lots that Mr. Ryan owns. The road is under construction here on the north side with the QuickTrip plat. Property is guided by the city's comprehensive plan to commercial, and it's currently zoned PUD. And the PUD specifically states that the underlying zoning is B5. That's our general commercial zoning district. So your various retail, service, office, entertainment, restaurant, gas station, those typical types of commercial uses are guided here today. Under high-density, you know, multiple, multiple-family dwellings containing more than eight dwelling units, or mixed-use projects containing ground-floor commercial uses. We would need to, I guess it's, I'm still trying to get in touch with the, the Met Council on this, but it's our opinion as staff is, it might require a comprehensive plan amendment for this change. Access to the site is, the site has great access, County Road 2 to the north. France Avenue is a major collector street on the east, and then Marketplace Boulevard is a local road in addition to the private road that is currently under construction. It's France Avenue, parcel is here on the right. Marketplace Boulevard. Again, I think you heard the noise compatibility study that was conducted in 2005. There was also a metering station near this location. The results are a little bit different than the results on the other side of the wetland area. On the two race events that sound metering was conducted, of course, this is closer to the oval track. The sound levels were higher. It looks like they ranged from about 67 to 73 decibels. And actually, I'm sorry, a little higher on a later race event, up to 77 to 78. You know, those are during the specific race. It's not necessarily continuous for a couple of hours during those race events. So when staff brought this to the planning commission, I, I think there were a couple of things we really wanted to point out. And I'm just going to review these with the council too, because I think these are the things we want you to think about with, when thinking about whether you support this change or not, is just the other pad-ready commercial sites in the city, and how many there are, and the availability of other pad-ready commercial sites in the city. So, and the loss of those sites with this potential change. The availability of other high-density residential land in the city. The location and visibility of this property adjacent to collector and arterial roadways. Compatibility of proposed high-density residential with the adjacent land uses. And noise impacts with the Elko Speedway and multifamily. I did make a couple of high, some high-level comments that have been provided to the developer. The concept plan that was provided was very high-level in nature. I really couldn't do any detailed review regarding whether the parking requirements have been met or setbacks or things of that nature. Right now, I think we're still, at least with the council, trying to zero in on whether there's support for the land use, the proposed land use. So I, I think with that, I'll turn it over to the council if I have any questions. And of course, Tom is here, and he might want to add as well.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Probably should. I just, I guess I'd like to start off by saying, does everybody understand what we're talking about? I brought some larger exhibits, could point and talk more clearly, but.
Counsel, any?
Anything?
I think we can, we can get it.
Got a good grasp on it. So this, this property, Elko Marketplace, started its development back, I think there might have been just one city. It might have been just Elko. So 2002, 2003. The goal was to provide something that the city didn't have, was a nice-looking, commercial retail development area. Seemed like a likely spot. It was ready for, it was ready for users in 2005. The post office built there somewhere around that time, 2005 to 2006, somewhere in there. And shortly thereafter, we sold a lot to the New Market Bank. And then, from then on, things pretty much stopped. And certainly, buildings stopped. Somewhere down the road, we sold another lot to the Northfield Hospital, corner lot. They never built, New Market Bank never built. We've had no activity until the QuickTrip, thank God, came along and decided to build there. So it's been a long haul. It's been 18 years, somewhere along there, since the original investment. RNF is the company that I own. We partnered with the city and paid our assessments to upgrade France Avenue. We built Elko Marketplace at our own expense. We did other things. Substantial investment in infrastructure. To this date, we've had very, very little return, but yet we pay our taxes every year. And we keep looking for that buyer to come along. I'm here to tell you that the, the trends for retail have changed dramatically since 2005. The original plan we had, kind of just added it up briefly when, before I spoke to the planning commission. And we had a little over 100,000 square feet of retail space. Retail commercial space within that 11 or 12-acre piece. It's been a real struggle. We've done everything we could. It's not about price. It's, it's not even about, I've even offered to say, I'll, you want something, I'll build it for you, you rent it back for me. You don't even have to pay to have it built. Just sign a lease. So, and it's probably gotten, the trends have changed, right? Now, when I order something, even when I live in Lakeville, first thing I do is I go on Amazon and I hit a few buttons, and they have my credit card, and thing shows up at my door at 3 o'clock, and then, you know, hours later. So I mean, that type of shopping has changed. I'm not saying it's gone away. We really counted on. We really counted on, way back when in two thousand and five, by now that maybe Elko New Market would be around twenty thousand people, and we're about five. So, we're a long ways from any kind of a supermarket. Nobody's fault, just the way things worked out. But what I have to do is I have to kick this thing forward. When I started this, I was fifty years old, now I'm sixty-seven, and I can't continue to hold on to this developed land and pay taxes on it every year. I have to do the smart thing, is that, that is, figure out what the need is. What is the need for this piece of land? And so, we did a market research analysis and study by Maxfield Research and Consulting Group. And, you know, obviously, we asked him to look at what's the need for apartments. They took a good look at the area, and they drew a box around, not just Elko New Market, but they went as far as this side of New Prague, this side of Montgomery, this side of Northfield, this side of Farmington, and I think they stopped at County Road Twenty-Seven. They figured there was twenty-one thousand people in this box, they drew a square around. They come up with probably the most interesting thing in this market study, is there's zero apartments available. People can rent a townhouse, or people can rent a house, but there's no apartments. If you kind of look at that, you know, a house rental maybe starts about three thousand a month. A townhouse maybe is two to twenty-six hundred a month. There's nothing in that sub-two thousand per month available right now. So, our market study says that there's a need, there's zero vacancies within the market study area. There's, they took, in my study here, I just got it on Tuesday, read it. They said if I had eighty units, eighty units available to rent, apartments to rent right now, that I could rent ninety-five percent of those eighty units in the first five to seven months. They also said I could rent twenty percent of them before they were even ready for people to move in. So, the need is there, people need a place to live at this price point. It's, I've seen this work in other areas, I've seen it work in downtown Lakeville, I've seen it work in downtown Savage, downtown Shakopee. The concept of this kind of mix of retail, neighborhood, apartments, it seems to work. Our plan was to be, what we're, and you haven't seen all this, you'll see this again. Of course, you're giving me conceptual approval now. I'll be back hopefully soon with some hard plans and some hard designs. Renee mentioned, she doesn't know how many parking stalls we have, but I can assure you, everything we do will meet city codes and city standards. But initially, we kind of think we're going to be around forty units, maybe forty-five units, something like that. Her plan would be, that's that first building, that doesn't have the retail component underneath of it, on the first floor. That first building, which would be, it would be Lot One, which kind of faces, we're going to orientate it so it faces mostly the Lake Elko, what I call Lake Elko. That'll be about forty-five units. And then, we'll see how that goes, we'll build that unit, see how it rents out. And simultaneous with that, we will create those two lots that you saw in their plan, would be for standalone retail with drive-through capabilities. I do believe there's room for one more lot there, so those three lots, or two lots, whatever they'd be, would face the street that the QuickTrip has created. Our market peep, our market analysis, people tell us that those type of standalone lots are much more desirable than somebody having a commercial space or a retail space underneath an apartment building that's got three fours of people living above it. I brought this up at planning commission, it seemed to strike a good tone, or a realist, you know, kind of the bell went off. You know, when you have retail commercial on the lower level, whether it be food preparation, whether it be people getting their employees out first thing in the morning, whatever it is, you know, that kind of commotion starts on early in the morning, and then you have people living above it. There's been some mixed reviews about people living above that. So, our first building would not have that. Currently, our second building, which would be the L-shaped building, that whole first floor right now, we have it designed for retail, commercial. So, we'll see how that goes. Like to get this one building up, get some activity on the property. I think it'll also spur growth and us being able to sell more lots around there. If somebody walks in, in the meantime, before we build our second building, and say, hey, we absolutely want a big retail commercial building here, boy, we'll sell it to them and give it to them then. But right now, I think we need to do something, we need to bring more people into the city, we need to provide this kind of housing. An important thing that I noted right now, on this, our research and consulting data here, on page twenty-six, Maxfield reports that there are no planned or pending market rate developments within our study area. So, even though you may have land guided for it here and within the city, there is nothing right now, nothing going on. They also, another, and now this is my last thing I wanted to bring up, is right now, there's a shortage, they figure there's a shortage of eighty-five to a hundred and forty units within this market study area. We're thinking about putting forty in, but that, that's eighty-five to one forty units is today. Five years from now, they, they said it's going to grow by four times that. So, the need is there, this one's ready to go, we're ready to go as soon as we can get approval for it, so. Does anybody have any other questions for, for me?
I have kind of a loaded question that I don't know that you'll actually answer.
I'll try.
I mean, so, we're talking about an apartment building next to a racetrack.
Yeah.
So, and it sounds like with the market study that there's interest for apartments, people need a place to live. So, they might not be as concerned about the noise, keeping in mind that there's not racing every single weekend anymore. But I think that Elko Speedway is a big piece of our community, and I don't want it to be going away.
Appreciate that, but you know, I always talk to the tax guy, and he says, Tom, the guy who puts the number on how much I have to pay every, and he goes, Tom, we're taxing you according, according to highest and best use. And I wish I could tell you that the racetrack will be here forever, but like, in all likelihood, it won't. It's going to be a supply and demand, it's a beautiful piece of property. I'll keep it as long as I can, I don't have the heart to take it away, but I'm not, you know, you know how it goes.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. Thank you for saying what you said, though, really appreciate that.
Any questions for? Appreciate you putting this work into it.
Yeah, we hope you look in favor about this, we think it's the right thing to do for the business community and the community in general, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel, any thoughts, comments, questions, concerns?
Well, no, I mean, I absolutely double down on the need for diversified housing options, we have squat. So, I've always been in favor of stuff like this. Getting back to, you know, and I, and we've had the discussion with, you know, off Two and Ninety-One, and, you know, other lots that we've considered looking at plans, and, you know, and rezoning things, and reguiding things. And I hear it, but, yeah, it's, it's always the, I mean, we're waiting, or we're trying to protect, and trying to protect the land that we do have, we have it guided for what we see potential twenty years from now, fifty years from now. But, I mean, we, there's such a need for this kind of housing option that, I mean, I, I frickin' love it. And, you know, I don't know if we have things on the docket that close to moving forward, because it sure would be nice to get something going, especially right there, you throw in some of those standalone places and see what happens with Lot Two. I mean, I'm rambling, but I, I love this kind of stuff, because I think we need it for a variety of different reasons. Workforce for current businesses in town, bringing in folks that can't afford a six-hundred-thousand-dollar single-family house. I think it's absolutely needed. I mean, is there massive concern from the staff standpoint, doesn't sound like from the planning commission standpoint, of, you know, relinquishing or rezoning things and potentially losing commercial business lots?
I think the crux of the issue is exactly what you brought up, Josh. As we talked about before, is there's valid concerns, the developer's time horizon is today. What can I do in the market today? That's perfectly valid, because if you want to do anything, the market has to be there, dollars make the world go round, there's absolutely nothing wrong with that. At the same time, the developer's timeframe is, you know, here. The time horizon for the city, once that's built, that's what it is, and it will be for fifty, hundred, hundred and twenty years, whatever it is. So, the time horizon for the city from a land use planning is much longer. The question for the council is, is really twofold. One, is that the appropriate thing and the appropriate location for the long-term, thinking decades down the road? And then, two, based on what we have and what we have guided, and Renee was talking about what we have available for lots today, but I'd also add to that, long-term, there's only so many places you can put commercial, industrial, you know, commercial industrial uses. They have to have access, they have to have visibility, depending on the nature of the uses, there's certain geographies, it's location, location, location. And as we continue to grow, and our ultimate community is expected to be a city of, you know, maybe seventy, as big as Lakeville is, say, seventy thousand, we've already peeled down our plan quite, at the last plan, quite a bit of commercial. The question is, if you re-guide this, do you still have sufficient commercial property in appropriate locations to meet the needs forever into the future, essentially? And is this the location, and if you think this is a priority, but it does shorten your availability, reduce your availability, what you really think, then you need to go find it someplace else, which means that you have to go to another property owner whose land is already guided to certain, or certain way. This is a judgment call on the part of the city council, and you have to get out your crystal ball, which is not always accurate, and you have to weigh your current needs against future impacts. With that, I think you have to really discern to the issue. Or two cruxes, is this the appropriate use for that location, long-term? And then, two, does it undermine the long-term public interest by removing needed commercial property? You know, Tom's absolutely correct, it's been out there for a long time. I may take risks as a developer, but at the same time, there's a need, a need for housing, and staff would disagree with that. It's an absolute slightest, the council's aware of that, it's just a question of location as well. The other thing I'd like to point out, is Tom's talking about commercial on the main floor, I want to be clear with the council. I'm not promising that in the future, and I don't know if there's a way you can help that guy to cooperate.
I wrote that down, can we require mixed-use in that second building in some sort of fashion of conditional approval of, or? I mean, there's obviously, we can provide our feedback of.
And we can, and we can also, there's always a chance that developer can amend what we approved today, or ask for it. There's still no need for commercial, I want to do a straight high-density building on that parcel. I mean, I would go into it with eyes wide open, expecting that that may be a likely second request. If he's wildly successful with the, you know, first building.
Is anyone adamantly opposed to what's being proposed? Is everyone generally in favor of it? Okay, I think that's direction.
That's what we needed.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, next item, I need to abstain, so, I'm going to use the restroom while you guys talk.
So, this item is fairly straightforward, we're asking the council to approve deposit placement here in the New Market Bank. We currently need to program through them, we have deposit process rules, so that deposit large sum of money, but rather than keeping it in savings account, they will take it and they will place it in other banks at levels that are all FDIC insured, so we're.
Spreading it out.
We're spreading it out. The benefit of that is because you're providing capital to the other banks, you get a higher rate of return than you're going to get through a savings account. And actually, historically, since the, since before the recession, the big one, back at the end of the last decade, we've gotten a better, a higher rate of return than we typically get for shorter-term investments, or equivalent enough to. Plus the benefit that the bonds were very good. Banks come to us and say, hey, we have this other program now, it's very similar to the first one, it's just slightly better because you have better online portal access to your account and the information associated with it, and the liquidity is slightly better, so rather than two business days, it's one business day to get access to it. And the other benefit is they've seen the programs, the program that they're recommending has a, they update their rates more regularly, so you're able to capture those rate increases earlier, because it's a little more rapid, so it's a margin of benefit that way as well. We don't see any reason not to do it. The, those benefits are small, but they are benefits, and it does provide overall, and there's no cost for us to do this. But it does require deposit agreements, so the council is required to approve.
Why shouldn't we do this? Is there a reason?
No.
So, do you just need a motion?
Just need a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve the agreement.
Second.
Motion by Kate, second by Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.
All abstained? Aye. Motion passes. All right, next item. Go ahead.
So, this is just a continuation of a previous item. At the last council meeting, the council had began a discussion about filling the vacancy due to Councilmember Shanky's resignation. You had accepted the resignation, declared a vacancy, but the process for filling the vacancy was put on hold. The council wanted to have a full remaining council on hand to finish that discussion. So, at this point, staff is really just looking for direction from council on the process that they would like to pursue.
Thanks. We had talked about this at the last meeting, I had suggested the idea of appointing someone. That's different than what we've done in the past. Thought process behind it was, it's going to be pretty impossible to find someone to take an objective look. We certainly can, but given, you know, how controversial the Niagara piece has been, I don't want to set anyone up to fail, or set anyone up for, well, let's say anyone up for fail. I mean, they're walking into a controversial item. I do have someone in mind, but before I even bring that person up, I'm curious what the rest of the council thinks. Appointing versus, or direct selecting versus interviewing.
I personally, I would like to see it go out for applications.
Okay.
Same.
I think it makes sense, I mean, I think to put it out there, and if this person is interested, then.
Okay. Good enough.
Yeah.
On to reports.
First quarter financial reports, I don't have any presentation associated with that, just stand for any questions that the council might have. First quarter is typically very uneventful, and this first quarter was no exception from that. There's isn't a lot of activity year-to-date.
Anyone have any, anything on the financial reports? Legislative policy committees?
So, annually, the council has typically met to take a look at the legislative policy committees for the Metro, Metro Cities Association. So annually, the council has typically met to take a look at the legislative policy committees for the Metro, Metro Cities Association, and for the League of Minnesota Cities, and coordinate if there's interest in council members participating on those committees, coordinating who goes, and also ratifying their attendance, that their, that person feels confident that they're authorized to speak on behalf of the city at those. We have been actually in recent years fairly active on those committees, so I've simply provided the committees that are out there. And at the time that I did the memo, the
Metro Cities?
Metro Cities had dates, League of Minnesota Cities did not.
I'll be joining a few, as I have in the past. Metro Cities is, is now posted. I just sent you the link, if you haven't been on there. What have I done in the past? Housing and Economic Development for Metro Cities. And it probably would make sense for somebody to do the transportation one with the I-35 stuff and the, you know, just related to the bridge or whatever. I mean, it might make sense to have somebody there. I'm not volunteering for that, but... And then the league, I already signed up for a couple of them. And these are nice because they can be zoomed now, versus before, they were always in person in St. Paul, and that was always, could be a challenge. But I signed up for the Local Economies and Service Delivery, I think, those two.
When does, since you have it up, when does the Transportation and General Government meet from Metro Cities?
Monday, July 24th, from nine to eleven thirty. Monday, August 28th, from nine to eleven thirty. So it's the fourth Monday of the month, from nine to eleven thirty. July 24th, August 28th, September 25th.
From what time, what time?
Nine to eleven thirty.
And where do they meet?
Either at the league office or via Zoom. Assuming they'll have a Zoom option again.
I can do the Metro Cities Transportation and General Government one.
I, I don't have the ability to jump on any other committees.
Is there a need for the ones that are not picked up yet?
I don't know if there's a need, it's just how involved do we wanna get in some of this stuff? Do we feel all kind of market needs to be represented?
I guess that's a better way to ask my question.
Yeah, I mean, there's a, there is a, I might say a fringe benefit of being engaged and developing connections. And through that influence on stuff that might affect us in the future, not directly related to that committee, but you have to really decide whether or not the cost benefits there relative to your time constraints to just be engaged for the sake of being engaged on, on those committees.
I mean, it's, it's three meetings, once a month, now Zoom or virtual option. And the first, first one is informational. Second one, they bring specific speakers as recommended by the group in that first meeting to hit some hot topics. It'll probably be cannabis and some other stuff, based on legislative session this year. And then the third meeting in August is the finalize any policies that are recommended to change, so. I mean, if you missed the first one, yeah. Second one's probably the most important, from getting like hot topic stuff, and then the third one is actually revising some of the policy stuff.
What exactly is the Metropolitan Agencies one about?
It's basically the committee that deals with Met Council and Met Council-related items. So Metro Cities was originally established as the watchdog to deal with Met Council issues. Its scope has expanded over time to other interests. But League of Minnesota Cities didn't wanna take it on, and so that's its prime, that's actually kind of its core, one of its core purposes.
Fourth Wednesday. Third Wednesday, fourth Wednesday, whatever it is. Same time, nine to eleven thirty.
I'll, I'll get in on that one, too. Thank you.
Let me see your text messages. Letters like fifty-five?
Any other, anything else on committees? Okay. Tom, do you have anything else for administration?
I did not, unless there's any questions for me.
Public Works report was included. I'm guessing there's nothing to be added?
Correct. Corey didn't give me any things. Oh, there's one item. We did have a sewer backup in the Windrose neighborhood. Basically, somebody put diapers, wipes, or other similar material. It was hard to tell after we pulled it off the jetter. But it basically plugged up a sewer line in the main, so this wasn't somebody plugging up their own service. But it plugged up in the main, and it did cause a sewer backup of some depth in somebody's basement. We'll be putting something out on Facebook to remind people about it, but people just don't realize the damage that can occur. So imagine, however, whatever the amount is ba, of black water backing up in your basement and the impact it has to your house, so.
It's all over the local Windrose page.
I was gonna say, that homeowner has already shared the information.
Please?
You want it short, long? Well, it's been a couple of meetings, so I'll make it as quick as possible. Two new hires, Stephen Senden, Zachary Batol. We're fully staffed now hired. It's gonna be four months before they're trained in and actually have an impact to the schedule, so it's gonna be a little bit. They're both super excited, hitting the ground running and doing very well. I've already heard public feedback from meeting with them, and it's all positive. The only other kinda substantive announcement is I was, put that in the report, I was very surprised to be elected to the Minnesota Chiefs of Police Association Board of Directors. I did not think it'd happen. It was the second time that I tried. I didn't make it the first time. Seven chiefs of police, four of them Metro, one of them the head of the Commerce Department, state Minnesota Commerce Department. So seven of us are going for three positions. I was able to get one, very excited. It's a three-year term. Already hitting the ground running at a foundation, Chiefs of Police Foundation. We just re, reached $140,000 in one fundraising event, and that's for community programs. So we're gonna be looking for, giving those out to communities to try to build trust in their communities with law enforcement. I'm gonna be doing some lobbying efforts for the Chiefs of Police Association as well, so I'm very excited to do that. It's a kinda culmination of my career, so. Something that I never thought I'd be able to be on. Other than that, probably by the end of summer, we'll get back to our twenty-four-seven coverage that we were at before. And I know we're working very hard on our wage and comp study to try to get that done as soon as possible. The number one issue with every police department is still recruiting and retention. Just for impact, we just hired April first, the replacement for Steve that left, Officer Rotelli left in November of last year. And by the time we're fully staffed from losing him and Officer Car cuff, it'll be eight to ten months that we've been down thirty-three percent of our department. So we're still, we have not seen a rebound in the education. We've, we've seen some slight increase in enrollment, but we're still very bleak on the future of people going in law enforcement. And another local police department just closed its stores in Newport, Minnesota, is closing here. Their operas strength is bigger than us, and they're down to a chief and an officer right now, so, because they can't find anybody. So it's kinda, I have a thirty-year reference that I've been in the business, and we've never seen anything like it. And in talking to other people, no recorded history of we have this kind of lack of interest in law enforcement, so. Hate to be a downer on that, but it's something that we're working really hard on. We're, that's part of the lobbying that I'm gonna be doing is incentivizing this incredible career. Again, where people desire to go into it, and we do that through laws and incentives, financial incentives and everything else, so. I'm open for questions, but otherwise, that can be a thing.
How's the Newport chief? I mean, we could replace ours with somebody that's got a great job.
That you could give him pretty cheap.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Engineering?
Little report.
Community development?
Do you have a report? Jake is on the line here, so I'm just trying to decide who else back what's first thing. But the first report is planning of shipping containers. And we have gotten, the council's probably familiar with people bringing in shipping containers for storage, or some of them converted into housing units. And we have received an inquiry in the planning department and whether they were permitted, so we don't have any regulations of all those kinds of requirements. So Jake has done some research on that topic and presented to the planning commission in April. Okay, I'll keep going then. The planning commission did not support shipping containers, just generally being, being allowed in the city for storage, for permanent storage, for housing. But they asked staff to research possible ordinance that would allow just temporary storage of a pod, being placed in somebody's driveway during a time of moving or renovation of a house or something like that. And possibly for storage in industrial districts or maybe commercials. So we just wanna make sure the city council's kinda on the same page and not post like that to the
I'm available for any questions. There is a handout packet. Sorry if that was loud.
Walk everybody up.
Yeah, I mean, when's the planning commission gonna look at this?
Um, next meeting.
Next meeting, okay. Any other thoughts or comments?
And Tom and I participated in a bus tour today. It was a bus tour of all industrial development sites within Scott County. It was an invitation, we invited Gray around speed. The tour was coordinated by Scott County CDA. It was very informative and it was very fun to see all those other cities and what's going on. Lastly, I know that Tom has been communicating with you about this, but maybe we can just get some direction from the council, from the way the council feels. City, a couple of months ago, hired SRF to do some analysis of our interchange, and so to help us understand who was using our interchange. And we did a presentation of the I-35 solutions program. We thought maybe that would be good to present to our planning commission, because they're really incredibly unaware of these discussions about the interchange and possible replacement design. Also got some feedback from the public that the public would be interested in hearing that kind of information, so we thought of joining session with the planning commission. At the next meeting, if the chair is available. And I guess I'm just looking for direction. If you, did you say there was one person that's available?
There is one council person. Kate's gonna be out of town. Other council members had indicated they would be available.
Would you prefer to schedule it on the May planning mission meeting? Do you want to check, or would you like to look for a meeting with the full planning commission?
I mean, it's not super time-sensitive, right?
I don't think so. It's just scheduling availability of the consultant.
Okay.
He's available that day, but we haven't been in other days.
Man, I'd say if we can look at a different meeting day where we can have a full council and commission, that'd be ideal, and, but I don't know if I'd wanna push it too far beyond another month.
I would suggest, based on past experience, the likelihood of being able to get everybody is, is slim. I, I think it's a question of do you have enough availability, or the people that are most interested, are they able to attend?
I'll stand by what I said, so. Anyone disagree? Okay. All right, anything for parks? I'm sorry, did you have any more? Okay. I'm assuming nothing to be added for parks? Okay. C C E C?
We meet next week.
Okay. Uh, scales tomorrow. Is there anything for service delivery?
Uh, we meet on Monday.
Yeah. I-35 hasn't met.
Met this morning.
Well, it did meet this morning.
We met this morning, got a min-ship, which I had never heard of before, is the Minnesota statewide highway improvement plan? Project? I don't know. I sent it to Tom to send out. They're gonna send the presentation. It was pretty cool. Highway, state highway investment plan. And it's like a twenty-year plan or forty-year plan that ties into all this stuff and, but it, it would be probably helpful as we look to get potential funding for interchange and how, where we fit into some of that, so. I learned something. And then we have a meeting in June, and then we don't have a meeting in July or August, so.
Okay. And then, you're kinda only temporary filling in on that, so.
I gotta do it in June, and then we have two months to buy time, and then we can assign it to whoever we put over here and let them do it.
Sounds good. Uh, discussion by council. I do have one thing, but before I go, does anybody else have some, have anything? All right, I think we have to figure out a timeline for when we went on table, the Niagara stuff. The primary crux of why we tabled everything when we did was to update our water supply plan. We have our water supply plan updated. It'll likely be on, you know, the next, the meeting in two weeks. How's our agenda looking for the next meeting?
Um, it's actually fairly light.
Okay.
It's similar to, similar to tonight.
Tonight was light?
Not including the work session, but the business agenda.
Um, how's everyone feel about tackling this at our next meeting, our next council meeting?
And when we say tackling, what are we tackling, and what are we talking about?
Well, we'd be untabling the, oh yeah, what are the specific items that we all tabled? There was the subsidy.
So you tabled the significant user ordinance, you tabled the significant user agreement, you tabled the conditional use permit, and then you tabled the three business subsidy application items, so basically all of the Niagara-specific items, so to, more specific items, so to speak. So in order for you guys to have discussion on it, you would have to take it from, you'd have to remove it from the table. Once you're talking about it, where you go from there is up, up to you guys.
So, just the one thing I would note, I am not going to be here for the next meeting, so if you want somebody...
Oh, you should be here.
Yeah, I think you'd want me here for that, and I hate to have another attorney come to that meeting.
You have fun with them.
Yeah.
So, so based on that, if you were to untable the item and schedule it for an agenda, we would recommend the June, first meeting in June.
We didn't need you anymore.
I'm just, I mean, if you wanted a full council, I'm going from May 28th to June 8th, and I don't get back until later that evening.
Ideally, I would like a full council for this. How about the meeting after that? Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you. July thirteenth.
Well.
No, July eighth.
Oh.
No. No, no meeting on July eighth?
No, you're July eighth, it's Sunday, Saturday.
Oh, I'm on the wrong month.
At this point, I mean, is it, I know it's probably a meeting you want to participate in, right? I mean, yeah.
Well.
So the, the conditional use of permit application, quite honestly, Renee is the most expert at it, because that meeting, Jake can handle the business subsidy stuff, that's, those are his items. I can handle the SIU agreement and the ordinance. Those were primarily my items. But the condition, but all the stuff related to the site plan, that's still out there, and as you know, there was direction and items that were still being worked on. Those were all Renee, and neither Jake or I would have the same level of knowledge and competency, subject matter competency that Renee would have on that. Can we, can we make, can we cover? Always. If you tell us, we'll make it happen, but.
Can you separate the items, so like, the conditional use for the next meeting?
Can you separate the items, so like the conditional use for the next meeting and then?
It seems to me that the ordinance could be, um, in general.
Yeah, I mean, I, you, you...
The subsidy piece is the key one I want the full council for.
So you could move through, you could move forward on the land use items. The subsidy, and the subsidy item could be separate from the ordinance and the land use element.
I don't know how much discussion we're supposed to have here about having discussions and, I mean, I, I guess, I'm not gonna, the, the significant user agreement or ordinance, excuse me, the significant user ordinance seems like the easiest because it's broadly speaking not specific to any applicant or any specific thing. I think that makes sense at any point. We could hash through some of those details, move that forward. I mean, that seems like the easiest one. You know, until we know what the direction's gonna be with aquifer testing and costs and some of that, I mean, that's gonna potentially spur different questions and discussion. And we don't have those details yet and I don't know if we're, we have a timeline of when we're gonna get those. So anything specific to that? I mean, I'm not inclined to rush it until, I don't know, until we get more detailed that way. But I also know that we have to start having the discussions to, to make sure that we're being fair and appropriate to all involved. And, you know, my, my biggest concern has always been and is related to the water stuff, which could include or doesn't include the appropriation side of things, the water supply plan, maybe even the significant user agreement and ordinance because that ties to the protection of that, but...
So, so staffs?
Don't want to look at anything contingent upon the DNR's results? You want to wait for DNR results?
I don't know, I'm not saying that. I just don't know when is the appropriate, I don't know if there is an appropriate time because we're not gonna get it for god knows when, which is a joke, too. But, yeah.
Okay.
So just a quick question. Sixty-day rule? Hundred-and-twenty-day, sixty-day extension, is there...
Yeah, they're gonna need to extend, they're gonna need to authorize our extension.
Um, when, when does it expire now?
I don't have, uh, give me a second, I'll figure it out.
Who authorizes that extension?
They have to authorize it at this point.
Who's they?
Applicant.
Applicant.
So if you recall under state statute, we have sixty days from a complete application to make a decision. If we need more information, need more research, whatever, which in this one is clearly justifiable, we can extend it to a hundred-and-twenty days. However, within that hundred-and-twenty days, we have to make a, an extension or the applicant has to give us an extension. The reason that such rules are in place associated with a lot of applications is so cities can't, it forces cities to do their job.
But we can't do that with the state.
Why would we force the state to do their job?
Well, they're the state, they get to do it.
We would have to either act on it by the second council meeting in June or they, typically what happens is they allow an extension. They have to submit a letter.
So when you say by meeting before or the second meeting in June would be the last meeting we would have to do it?
Correct.
Okay. The other question I would just throw out for the council is a special meeting in option. This is a big topic. It's gonna garner a lot of public interest. Does it merit its own, its own meeting?
It's a good point.
And we can schedule it when we've got a full council. As we get into the summer months, there always seems to be the possibility that people are unable to make it.
Yeah, I like that idea. Do a special meeting. Is anyone opposed to that? It's probably gonna be the easiest to coordinate. Or not the easiest to coordinate, but probably the most practical solution.
Kate, you're gone. When do you get back?
Well, I get back on the eighth and I'm just trying to figure out what time I get in.
Okay.
So I get back at a, at, oh, I don't get back till seven P M.
Okay. Based on your schedule, Andrea's schedule and my schedule, it would, a special meeting would have to be the week of June 12th to the sixteenth.
And that's good because obviously there's a lot of public interest and we've tried hard to make people aware.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm leaving on the tenth.
Okay.
Reasonable to say it's not the next meeting.
I'm sorry.
Not the next meeting.
We don't have to pick the meeting right now.
Yeah, okay.
So, which is generally, we need a motion to untable something, right?
If we're gonna, yeah, it would be best if the council does want to schedule it, you could untable the item.
So if we untable the item, then staff can work on trying to coordinate a date that works, right?
Correct. I'll send out a do the poll for everybody to respond to.
Is the council comfortable untabling the item and taking this approach?
I mean, I'll just reiterate, I mean, my concerns have always been solely, mostly related to the water side of things. So I'm gonna be hard pressed to, to take any action on things that are related to the water stuff until we get more direction from the DNR related to appropriation permit and stuff. So, you know, I'll happily discuss all the significant user ordinance stuff and everything related to that, but I don't really want to go too far down the path of specific stuff unless it's some sort of conditional conversation or something that, I mean...
Are you okay with untabling this?
To have the discussion about having, yeah.
I'll make a motion to untable all the previously tabled items. Is that acceptable? Acceptable motion?
Except that you haven't identified when they'll be heard.
I thought, I just asked that if we had to do that.
Can the council untable the items for scheduling at a future meeting?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. So I've made a motion. Is anyone seconding that motion?
Second.
It's a motion by myself, second by Kate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No opposed, alright. Any other discussion by council? If not, then it's a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.